Well, it's hooked by the USB. So the EZ camera is just a regular. Which is just this camera, not that camera.
Chad been on this one?
I got your Christmas card.
This is something.
At least you guys. Looking at other listings out. On 7/21/21. And I see with my trip to miss.
Yeah. And I have a car and I have a tree.
I guess, but that is only people.
That's such a good deal.
I guess I'm getting some.
Um, oh, yeah.
I guess.
And if you're gonna describe me. I mean, if we're there.
Oh, is this. It took three hours of getting them down.
Yeah.
Also, I don't know if you're serious about it. I'm serious about it.
But that seems kind of like.
You can set up hot too. Yeah.
You know, I can say very well that. You know, say hello.
Do you guys have. We have a.
Well, earlier. And then my camera, the camera for charity and it worked and now it's not working.
We've done that twice. Is that all good enough?
My life before. I don't have to be. No, but and I don't think.
What if it's. We need a record, right? Okay. That will.
Come on, right there.
Research backwards.
They got one. First right. Well, I know, just make sure it's not lost. You're back in. Yeah.
We did that.
Then separate them.
Actually, let's. Let me double check.
Because cameras. I mean, it's about this way too. So. Well, that's and that's.
It sounds like we're not going to that if we're going to not. Here's our.
Yeah.
Well, part of. Tom, I would want to read a little. Basis. Now, I'll ask you a problem. Just lift that off. So that will. So first I walk.
And I think, um.
At least you did pretty well.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, you know, you had.
And so I gave him the. So I'm guessing he has his best.
Or maybe he did. I didn't check. But I don't. It was one of you.
Just go.
I don't like. It's been a struggle. That can work. I'm not. I mean, I. I just need my.
I really. Backstage. You're. That's really backstage. The service. Nothing but.
Well, the thing is, once they. Who's gonna take care of her? That's what I want to know.
I will not allow a state to mess with my life.
I hear you.
They're stressing out.
Oh, I can imagine. I can imagine.
Mexico's looking. Right. I even know.
Yes, there's something like.
They're coming on you. They're. The two people that have to. Yeah.
I think.
Well, so.
Two samples. Or too many.
Yeah.
Right.
We could still whenever we want.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah.
So. Well, hospital, I don't know. Hospital. Local. Uh, it's gonna be like.
That's why.
Something you're supposed to do.
I would. Okay. I know.
So twenty years. Yes. And oh, it's. Yeah. So they're. Yeah, that's a good.
Blundin, blundin.
There's nothing to tell them. This is. This is a crazy one. I tried. And you're not allowed to. I was hoping. I was hoping.
Wow.
You know, man, it's. You didn't realize you had.
You know. My mom's more than you all. She's saying.
So what do you. They were kind of. Showing themselves.
No question. And so you. Like.
Sorry. I haven't even. You got.
Oh, yeah.
A little. It's. Country. Because. Yeah. I've got a nice. Inspiration.
I'm like. Six fifty nine.
One day.
No, seven. That's.
Twenty seconds.
And that's. That's why.
Were you guys?
Oh.
I took.
I never wanted.
Dangerous. Left it out.
I don't want to. Yeah.
I'll let you go out with a bang.
I thought I was dangerous with it.
So.
Just.
I have a decent.
The City of Sutherland Planning Commission Meeting Tuesday, August thirty first, twenty twenty one, at seven P M. Is now in session. Please stand for pleasure reason.
I plan to. To decide. The United States of America. The future of America, which stands. One nation under God. The individual with liberty and justice.
Okay, I've got quite a few guests. Is there any, uh, plenty from media? Okay, we'll move on to, uh, welcoming new planning, uh, commission members. Member. Alex. Uh, would you like to give a few words and go back about yourself and then why you came to the.
Yes, my name's Alan Woods. Uh, long history here, but actually, in my early twenties, I lived in those. Went to U C C for a while. Uh, with my wife. We moved back a couple of years ago. Um, wanted to slow things down a lot and enjoy, you know, the community that shares some values. And, uh, we just kind of. Take part and make a difference and improve the community. A bit about, I guess, my work background. Uh, I'm in telecommunications, so I do some, uh, some contracting. And, uh, I also, I guess, uh, from all the remodels I've been doing, I've become a bit of a handyman now. Uh, so that's, that's basically what I do. Also, uh, I'm a martial artist and a pastor.
Thanks, Alan. Okay, approval of minutes for June fifteen, twenty twenty one, for the regular meeting.
Commissioner Daigle.
Well, I.
Commissioner Lisa Woods.
Hi.
Commissioner Alan Woods.
Hi.
Commissioner Sernowski.
Hi.
Did you say pass?
No.
All right, okay. Commissioner Price.
Hi.
Commissioner Davidson.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
Yes, I.
Okay, next we're going to move into, uh, positive judicial hearings. Uh, and the first thing I'm going to do is, uh, via disclosure statement. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties to the application and must provide their name and full mailing address if they wish to be notified of the decision. Continuances, appeals, or other procedural actions required by the code. Public testimony should be limited to those criteria and findings of facts or to other city or state land use standards. That the person testifying believes apply to the proposed land use action. Anyone wishing to be considered as a party in this matter must raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to the city zoning code. Providing specific applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of facts are in the city staff report. According to the hearing body and parties to the hearing, an opportunity to respond to an issue precludes appeal to the city council or land use board. Or to seek damages in Circuit Court due to condition of approval. Okay, on opening the public hearing. Okay, is there any declaration of any conflict of interest, site visits, financial interest, any ex parte contacts or other personal bias in this matter? Are there any challenges to the planning commission members to impartiality in the matter? Okay, need to identify the parties, uh, party status.
Um, so at the time of the staff report, the only, um, people with party status is Brandon McGar with the Southern Fire Department and Josh Heacock Douglas County Public Works.
Good.
Here, I'm entering, um, staff report with the twelve exhibits. Um, we want to look at and pass around.
Is this some of the stuff we've already received?
Yeah, so the notices and the staff report, and there's some additional maps. Um, the T I A, the traffic analysis, impact analysis is in there. So the applicant, Thomas McIntosh, who is a representative for the property owners, Tabor Building, is requesting a planned unit development to be developed in two phases that total fifty three lots, together with the required open space on nine point eight five acre unit land. Subject property is located on the south side of Fort McKay Road. In Sutherland, it is described as stock lot two thousand in section twenty four A, township twenty five South, range six West. Um, the property is currently developed with a single family dwelling, um, that will be removed, um, as development occurs. Subject property is designated low density by the Southern Conference of Plan and Zone R one Low Density of Residential by the Sutherland Development Code. The application is being processed as a type three procedure for a P U D. As part of the hearing, the planning commission will review the applicant's request for compliance with the applicable position provisions of the Sutherland Conference of Plan. And also chapter two, section two point two, chapter three, the design standards, chapter four, section four point six, planning developments of the Sutherland Development Code. During tonight's public hearing, um, the planning commission will accept public testimony and deliberate to a decision on the application after closing the public hearing. Upon rendering a decision, the planning commission must make a written findings of fact decision document which justifies this decision. Uh, the P U D application was deemed complete by the city on July twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. All applicable application fees were paid at that time. Pursuant to section four point two point one four oh point C of the Sutherland Development Code, notice of the public hearing was given by publication and the news would be on August third, twenty twenty one, which was at least fourteen days prior to the date of the public hearing. Notice of the public hearing for the P U D before the planning commission was given according to section four point two point one four oh point C, notice was sent to affected property owners of record within a hundred feet of the subject property, service providers, and governmental agencies on July twenty eighth, twenty twenty one, and then a rescheduled notice of public hearing sent on August eleventh, twenty twenty one. As stated, Brandon McGar, battalion chief with the City of Sutherland, um, noted some requirements as far as fire standards go within a normal, um, subdivision P U D development. Josh Heacock with, um, Douglas County Public Works replied regarding because Fort McKay is a county road, so it's under their jurisdiction. Um, and then, as I'm sure all of you have read, because you're, you like to read what I send you. You have read the body, um, all of the procedural findings that apply pertain to the applicable, um, requirements. So we're gonna skip to the action alternatives. Based on the applicant's findings, the city staff report and testimony evidence provided during the public hearing, the planning commission can choose the public here, can close the public hearing and move to select from one of the following action alternatives. Action alternative number one, approve the requested P U D for fifty three lots to be be developed in two phases. Phase one will be twenty seven lots and phase two twenty six on the subject for nine point eight five acre property, subject to the following conditions. Um, within the staff reports, there is a list of thirty five conditions and two advisory statements. Um, I'm not going to read through all thirty seven of those. Action alternative number two, approve the requested P U D subject to modifications or additional conditions of approval. Action alternative number three, continue the public hearing to a specified date and time or to close the public hearing and leave the record open to a specified date and time for submittal of additional evidence and rebuttal. Or action alternative number four, deny the requested P U D on the subject property on the grounds that the proposal does not satisfy the applicable approval criteria. Staff recommendation is city staff recommends that the planning commission select action alternative number one and approve the requested P U D for the fifty three lots to be developed in two phases on the subject nine point eight five acre property, subject to the conditions of approval that were stated above.
Okay. The, uh, advocate, uh.
Yes.
Uh, for you.
That's me.
Uh, do you have a staff or a report for me?
Um, the applicant would just like to offer testimony. Application. We first want to, uh, just go in. This is, I want to appreciate the staff department. We're. Together. Um, we concur with the findings, uh, and use thirty five conditions to drive your statements, um, in facilities. Rules that are housed in codes, and we appreciate that very much. We agree. With the proceedings. What happened? Any questions?
Does any of the commissioner have any questions for the other? None. Okay, uh, we'll now receive any testimony from proponents of the, uh, application.
I have my questions.
Sure.
Um, what's the timeframe? For this, uh, episode one? It's almost too long.
Two years.
Two years.
Not that it necessarily will take two years.
Yeah.
But they are allotted based on the development code, two years per phase.
Good question. Are these, uh, is this just a lot only and somebody purchase a building or are you guys trying to build it as well?
Yeah, the business model for Tabor River, most to create the lots and then build a home so that you end up with a nice, homogenous neighborhood. Um, you know, so there's not really enough money in developing lots to make it, they send their own business model at this point. You're not building houses, probably not driving reason to create the lots. Yeah, our business model is to create the lots and and do the build out.
The turnkey.
What's that?
Turnkey.
Turnkey, yeah. One of, one of the things that draws a lot of customers to us is we find that's the build outs. They're either whether they're buying a spec house that's done or buying something that's in process or something that's contemplated, they're buying it with a regular conditional purchase mortgage at completion, like you would buy in another house that you found. So that leaves opportunity for people that are no V A buyers or, um, farm home buyers or F H A buyers, which are all kind of typical.
You don't have to go through the new construction loan process.
They do not have to do construction.
What's, I was reading that, uh, the minimum size would be a thousand square feet at home site.
That must be in the code. That, that's, that's below the floor of what I would consider. Um, so that'd be, that must have been the code.
Okay. And then this, um, would, do you guys have what size homes you might be building?
Yeah, you know, um, I, I typically tell people that we build Lexus and Toyota out of the same factory. People understand the different product types and I see this as being a, maybe a little bit of a hybrid, but more of a Toyota type of a neighborhood. I'd like to make this affordable. I'd like to get families in this neighborhood.
That actually raises my next question. So it's, what's the potential for increasing or decreasing existing home values in the area?
Yeah, so, you know, I, I think that even if you, for example, say like my analogy, think you'd say a Toyota Camry, there's nothing wrong with the Toyota Camry. No one shows up with a Camry and you know, that brought my value down in my parking lot. It's a nice car and that's kind of what we do. We build, we build a nice house. We build, um, you know, our, our entry level, um, thread level, I think, is, um, beyond what you would expect to be entry level. You know, ask granite, ask custom cabinets. Um, and having said that, you know, well, we do have nice features as entry level. We do want to focus on playing this, not the even top twenty percent of, um, having the neighborhood be more driven towards, um, affordability and 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 service and balance and stability.
I apologize if this stuff you guys already talked about.
No, I'm happy to answer. I'm excited, I'm excited about this. Like, you might have noticed in the submission, there's things out front here, um, you know, uh, an area for kids to be where they're ready for school bus.
Right.
Um, you know, a little disheveled where you can go down and have a barbecue, the kind of things that, you know, are missing from a lot of newer subdivisions where there's not kind of a neighborhood component to, to the grand design. And so we really wanted to start there and make it, um.
And then speaking about that, bringing the young families, are you guys offering anything for the schools or anything like that?
I, I, I'm not familiar with any of that being brought in into this, uh, application. I hope to bring some new students.
There you go.
No other questions?
Have the, um, questions from the fire department been fully answered?
No, because a lot of those will come as design and with the engineers. Um, once it's fully engineered, those plans will also be reviewed by the fire department, state fire marshal. And until they're approved that by the state fire marshal, they won't be.
Are we doing water supply for. Yeah.
Yes, because non-peril, um, treatment plant will be, um, fully done being constructed. So then we'll have an extra amount.
Is your business model based upon the current housing market, the, the economics, the, the cost of housing? Because right now it's kind of like seller's market. And what happened to it, looking back to the fire department?
Sorry, I can tell you that, um, between Mr. Tabor and I, I, I feel like we've been through every time. Uh, Mr. Tabor, he started in the seventies and, um, and so he experienced some booms and busts in his career before I became his project manager. And I took over in project management for him, I believe in those eight or seven, just in time, four things ago, from robust to really challenging. And so we, um, we, I think we've kind of seen both sides and, and we also get our, our, the ebb and flow of our business model has to adapt to the market conditions. So today, if it stayed like it is today, we'd go as fast as possible. You know, there'll be an enrollment quite possibly during some point of the construction of this, um, project where it's a build out or whatever it might happen. There might be a point where the absorption of the market time is not nearly so robust and, and we might have to offer units more affordably and or less frequently. And so, um, you know, we luckily, we were small enough to be nimble enough to respond to market conditions and, and so we're not just obtuse and committed to something that might not even work.
Thank you.
Do you have a restriction of new homeowners selling their property for pressure projects?
No, no, that's, I, I think that was the contractual restriction. Um, I, I've never had that in any of our previous subdivisions. Um, what we, um, you know, what we do ask is that we do have a provision that people can't sell their house while we're building it. Um, when things get remarkably hot, sometimes people buy a house just to try and sell while you're building it. I know that sounds ridiculous, but that happens. And so that's the only proviso that I have that's kind of related to your question. When you have to become the owner and if you want to sell it because the market's improved, that's up to you. But you can't sell it to somebody and hand me your new buyer halfway through. So other than that, no, I do not have, had not previously ever had a plan to have or restriction on people having to maintain ownership until, for example, the base was built down or something similar.
Any more questions? Okay, uh.
Could I ask the question?
Not you.
Oh, okay.
Uh, because we're going to move into, uh, testimony of people that are in favor of or proponents of the project that we have. Are you in favor of?
I want to ask my question before. I'm gonna be affected here. We're the property owners, but, you know, we're all.
Pretty soon we'll ask for neutral comments. So if you want, if you have something in favor of the application, you're welcome to go up there.
I just wanted to ask a question.
Oh, okay. We'll.
Okay.
Okay, uh, there's no proponents, uh, now we'll receive testimony of anyone opposing. Yeah. Okay. Okay, now, here's what. We're gonna receive, uh, neutral comments, uh, and give your name and address.
Okay. Oh, that one, okay.
So we can hear you.
Okay.
Okay, my name is Davis Ecker. I live on Friday Road two four nine.
Okay, my name is Davis Ecker. I live on Friday Road, two four nine. And so the backend of my property is, it puts up against this new development coming in and I'm, I'm okay with it. Uh, when will this start and how long will it take? Do you have a timeframe? To get this building done?
Uh, yes ma'am. Um, thank you for your question. The doubling back to the rules, I think I have two years to finish the first phase. I don't expect it to take that long. Um, the CEB staff was very helpful in helping me bring this to this body as quickly as possible so that we can hopefully get started. Still yet in this calendar here, with the construction of this subdivision. Um, when we made the application, we were unaware how long it would take to get wetlands performance. And, uh, see all, you know, there's a lot of wetlands in places in the city of Southern. And so we stopped our phase one short of the map to wetlands to make sure that we could get phase one started, even if wetlands performance did not be adding any danger to the state level. Um, it has since been, and so that now is kind of a superfluous movement, but, um, we're going to leave the line of delineation where it was applied between the two phases. And we expect to get to phase one construction immediately. And, um, I am optimistic we'll be under construction houses, um, um, late spring, early summer of next year. Currently, currently we finish a house every eight calendar days. Um, now that, that horsepower wouldn't be committed exclusively to this neighborhood necessarily. But that happened and said, there's probably a two-year build out time for the residences. And, and ideally we'd start detailing the construction of the infrastructure of phase two. When you had X amount of months left of home construction left on phase one. And, um, so we don't really know the market conditions when it'll be two years from now. But the idea would be to get right into home construction, engage how quickly and then ramp the phase two development. Um, we're just right now finishing a project in the Green District of similar size. And from approval to last house, it's going to end up being about five years. So I think that's a reasonable ballpark for the total duration of the whole project, including residential build out.
Well, I think the two years, so when you have any of these applications, um, per the development code, you have so many, so many years to platter, which means we've now mapped the lots. So for a subdivision or P V, it's having the infrastructure and the streets filled. That is what you have two years to do.
Oh.
So then the construction timeline, you can't, can't start until after that map is planted.
I'm just getting used to it. I still have a good view of the back end.
Look at the map, you're about stage two, so you've got a good, you've got a good long run.
I've got a ways down here, right. And I have another question too. You're getting the city services out there. Now, I live on Friday Road, we've been wanting, um, water and sewer. Um, you're probably getting yours from over on Hope and Gabriel, I'm guessing.
But the good news is, I, I, I think mostly this is probably an analogy in Southern specifically does require a developer like this. You can't just bring the sewer or water and stop in the middle. You've got to bring the main, so to speak, all the way across our frontage to make it available to the next person down. So she's your, she's the person to talk to, because it'll be at the edge of her place and it'll be up to her to get it to the corner or whatever. But I'll, I, I won't stop at my corner. I'll get into her corner and you guys can figure it out.
Okay, but I can build, so.
I can only, I, I can only control what I can do. But I, but I have to bring it all the way through my frontage to make it available to continue.
Sure. So it may come along the backend of my property too, no?
I, I, I don't want to, um, I don't want to speak for the city of Southern, but I do know that, that, you know, circulation and full city services are probably in their long-term goals. And so you're, you're probably in the cost areas of development now that you're in the city limits and entitlements.
Thank you.
Any other neutral comments?
I will try to let it out. Hello, I'm Ashley Leak. I am one four one Platten Road. I'm the corner property, express owner. Um, so I think this will affect me the most. I have eight houses coming on my property line. Um, so, uh, obviously a Lexus and a Corolla are two very different parts. What's the average home cost going to be here? A hundred thousand versus five hundred thousand is completely different.
Oh, yeah.
Um, for this neighborhood?
I did say a little clarity, I did say Camry.
Oh, Camry versus Lexus are two different cars.
I like CSG, Toyota Corolla, pretty similar. Um, but to answer your question, um, the, um, using current market conditions. These I would not expect to be worth or cost less than our current on their, in, in Green on Brant Road. Um, which would put a fifteen to sixteen hundred square foot house, uh, which would be kind of an entry point and the people could be more. But we put fifteen to sixteen hundred square foot house, um, in the three fifty to three seventy range, um, based on current market conditions and costs. And that can go either way. But if I had to like stamp today where, where I feel like that is, I probably won't have offerings less than fifty hundred square feet.
Okay.
Um, and given that kind of baseline, probably people won't be more than two thousand or twenty-two hundred. So using today's market, I would say three forty to four ten is kind of the range of, of what's going to end up.
Okay. Um, what are you going to do about water runoff? So my property, when I bought it, completely floods every winter and it took me years to deal with. Um, I'm sure some people in the city of Southern probably know that. Yes, and so I've been working with the city of Southern or county and, you know, it's a whole mess. Um, I think that would be like my answer.
Um, number one, we're, we're not going to disturb the wetlands, which comprise the, um, I don't want to call them the creeper, the drainage. There, there are wetlands along the drainage that bifurcates subject property and flows towards you. Other than where the streets are at, those are going to be open spaces preserving the wetlands.
No, and, and I see that. However, I'm talking about from the mountain property. You're going to build all these homes currently, right now, it's a stream and then I had to build a huge open ditch because it completely flooded my property. That's going to be shut.
Yeah, oh, that was only answered, that was only like.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's a problem.
Yeah, so the good news is every single one from you, is every single one of these houses is, um, is loaded with impervious surface. The roof is impervious, the driveway is impervious, the road is impervious. I think on average, all the city's calculations is that's probably with the road included, it's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of four thousand square foot of impervious on average per dwelling unit. And everything that's impervious has to go into the storm drainage system and go into their, whatever storm system they approve of in a way that they approve of, but in a dedicated storm system. Now, part of that, I'm going to go to seat for a second, part of that is homeowner detention so that the runoff and from the impervious surface doesn't inundate the system. That's what detention does. Grabs all that water during the belly washer and then lets go out at a pace that the system can't accept. Now it's up to the design engineer and CS Southern or Creon, but that has to happen as part of this design. So basically, a whole bunch of the area that's now flooding you is going to end up in a designed storm system buffered by a detention system and not just wash on you like crazy.
That's, that is good. And so that will be your guys' water face, the, the detention ponds.
Yes.
Okay. Um, and so I know that people already talked to me too about the detention ponds and so have I. So that apparently is taken care of. That is good. Um, okay, and so obviously I bought my property, you know, intending on having land and privacy. I think we all did. Um, we all have plenty of acres. Um, it just now terminated city property versus county property. Um, when Sam, I don't know his last name, went around and basically told everybody to come into the city and you'll have all these utilities, which is clearly not true. Um, so how are you going to protect us who wanted our privacy? Like I said, I'm going to have now eight homes. I own livestock, I raise livestock. How are you going to keep or, or does the city, I don't, I don't know what I'm allowed to request. Um, but basically, you know, I don't want to look out what used to be pasture when I bought my property and see dogs lounging at my fence line and lounging at my chickens and my cows. And, um, a lot of us only have T post and wire fencing. Um, and obviously now, you know, like I said, for me specifically, eight new families are going to be moving in here, sticking their little grubby paws in between, you know, T post and wire fencing. I have dogs, I have cows. How are you going to, or, you know, what, what are basically you going to do to help ensure that, you know, our properties are being able to at least, you know, and I don't oppose this, let me get that straight. I don't, I don't, I don't oppose this. But, um, like, I'm not particularly happy with eight new homes. Um, when obviously I bought my property intending on, you know, owning a little bit of privacy and some land. Um, so, um.
How, how long do you make it feel better on this?
Um, so I would love a privacy fence. Um, and I spoke to Jamie on the phone and she said it's only going to be six feet. However, um, it will at least put some privacy in between there, maybe two-story homes. Um, because my property is at the very corner and the lowest part of all, you know, the corner. Um, if he builds a two-story home here, I'm going to have zero privacy whatsoever. Um, I'm sure my neighbors would as well. Um, and so, you know, I don't know what restrictions can be put into place, but, um, you know, I, you know, what do you, what do you think in here?
Yeah, well.
Tell me what you got.
Well, so I, I don't know. I, I think, I think in my time with Mr. Tabor, I've probably done five subdivisions. And I haven't met a neighbor yet who loved that their previous deer field extravagance and neighbor park became houses. Everybody liked what they had and.
Of course.
Especially, I did build houses, opened up houses and that's what the code set up for. So, um, what I will say, and I know I keep tying this back to my project in, in Green. But our standard practice, uh, at Table Building is to sell houses completely turnkey. And that includes backyard fencing and front and backyards with irrigation. And the reason for that, we, early on in, in dealings with Mr. Tabor and subdivisions, we do these typical, um, builder does the front yard only thing. And what happens is the backyard's never good. And the fencing never gets done because people leverage on the houses and they don't have the money later. And it'd be much better if they could just finance it. And then you don't have a neighborhood of half-done and, and fully done next year.
Different color fences, different styles.
So for example, I, I, I don't, you know, next time that you're, you know, next time you're out in the valley, drive, drive through, uh, KB Drive off of Truce in New Crest. Drive through, um, uh, off of Brant Road in, in, um, in Green. What you'll see is six-foot cedar good neighbor fences in the back of every single property that we install as a course of construction. I would, I would expect that from, that, that, that is what I intend for their houses next to you. Every single home will get sold with good neighbors, good neighbor, six-foot cedar fences, all the way up the street, all the way around.
Now, is it something that we can put for the Southern to approve this, that that's required along our fence lines?
If I, if I can interject, uh, so however sensitive we are to the, um, privacy situation. The fencing does fall outside of the scope of the plan. Uh, so essentially what we're trying to do is offer more housing units in the housing shortage. That's the objective of the application. Uh, so this, this typically comes up, it's very common, uh, it's an issue that is kind of prevalent. Especially, you know, with the U G B exchange and bringing all that rural area into the urban boundary. The changes there are sometimes difficult. Um, however, the, the fencing requirement cannot be the condition of approval because it falls outside of the plan. So however, usually when people come in, they buy these lots, uh, they buy the houses that are built. They're very nice houses. They're very, uh, uh, specific to that nature. And what we've always seen is by their own permission, they will, they will build those fences. Those little six-foot fence on the rear portion and the side, so in the front, the city requires a four-foot limitation. In addition, just to add context, it's a residential zoning designation. It's not to be developed. That's the underlying intention. But again, we are sensitive to that situation.
The four-foot they're talking about, that is, you can only go so high to the front of the house.
Yeah, you know, no, no, I'm only asking six-foot fence.
Yeah, so you're saying.
I'm asking that kids aren't sticking their hands through my T post and wire fencing and getting their hands bit by my dogs. I'm asking that I don't have eight new neighbors.
On your side too. I'm just, there's two sides of the property. I'm going to build fences. So unless, so unless, unless, unless something changes, like something way changes.
Yes.
There's going to be houses that all have six-foot cedar back fences and you're going to be like, that's what that kid told me was going to be. There it is.
And that's, and that's what I was wanting. Yes, that's, that was obviously something.
That's.
I'm going to have to interrupt here. Do you have any more questions?
Um, no, that was, that was it. Did I take too long now?
Well.
I, I thought they were pretty good for being a neighbor. Is that why you invited me here?
I'll send out comments.
Any more neutral comments?
She keep the deer out of my garden. This is the garden.
I'm Bruce Lopez, P O Box fourteen oh five, Southern Oregon. I'm in favor of the project, uh, you know, the city asks it to continue to grow in order to keep them informed. Questions I have is Fort McKay is a county road. Have they been involved in any traffic studies? Um, have they said whether it will impact any properties on Fort McKay, um, where they have entrances and exits currently?
Can I answer the question that you asked then?
We're happy to answer. Sure. So, uh, Fort McKay is a major collector. Of course, Doug's family, of course, is highly involved. It required anytime you're adding more than three hundred average daily trips onto a street, it requires a traffic impact analysis, which the, uh, we completed, it was done by Phil Timmons, traffic engineers. And it dictated that Fort McKay has well within its capacity to use the, uh, that stress as is.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. It, it's going to require an additional five-foot education because right away what it is required to be a certain, uh, footage. But beyond that, it's well within its capacity.
Is that five-foot designated on certain side yet?
It's a ten-foot deficiency, so it requires five-foot on both sides. So right now, in conjunction with this project, we're requiring to. Five-foot efficiency on our side.
Right, so five-foot on the other side as well.
Whenever they choose to develop, yeah.
The entrances, is a two hundred and fifty-foot entrance. That's why when you're over the thirty houses, the threshold, the fire concerns, you have to have, um, two ingress and egress. So the secondary access, it doesn't need the two hundred and fifty feet. That's why there will be a lock gate for emergency access home. So along Fort McKay, major collector, it's a two hundred and fifty foot, um, separation.
Okay, so in that, so that is affecting the process in other stuff, where they have. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, yes, there's no other neutral comments, so, uh, I didn't hear hardly any, uh, uh, opponents. So I don't think it's necessary to have the applicant do a revival. Uh, so we'll move on to, uh, closing the public hearing, but before I do, I'd like to ask if the commissioners have any permanent question? Nope. Okay, there he goes. Okay, there he goes. Commissioners, you might have a suggestion? Motion? Make the motion that we approve action number one.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Daigle? Uh, Commissioner Lisa Woods? Commissioner Alan Woods? Commissioner Sarnoski?
Yes.
Commissioner Price? Commissioner Davidson?
Yes.
And Chair Lee? So everyone should stay if you want to listen to the remainder of the meeting or you could, you're free to go. No, 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 no. You, Miss Wilson.
I'm sure my head would.
Thank you.
Well, I know the age. If you're a kid, we're all kids.
Mine's not quite.
November.
Okay.
You guys enjoy yourselves.
Okay, feel like I put that right through the middle house?
Neil pull me down.
It was a legitimate accident. I just realized.
Thank you all very much.
You did it?
I did it.
Tell Jerry Nick said hi.
I will do it. I will do it. Thank you all.
And so Alan, the beginning of this was kind of chaotic trying to get this to work. Um, so activity report, as you see, goes out every month, something we do for you guys as well as city council. Keep you in the loop, projects that we're doing that community development's involved with. Kind of a snapshot into what we do in a month's time. So if you have any questions or you could always email or call ahead of time or bring them up here.
Any questions on the activity report?
Nope.
This thing's a lot smaller than.
Not the binder's bigger. I'm like, it is?
Oh no, I mean, go back, right.
Yes, so you all got your new development code.
Something we've been working on.
Yes, so now this is your new development bible.
This is the one that has all the revisions in it?
Yep, and it's a complete document, so you can do whatever you want with that old one. This is the one you need to use from now on.
So I can put this one away and never look at it?
No, no.
Okay, public comment? Mr. Comment, or Lisa?
I, I know, it's unusual.
Curious, I might be wondering if you don't care in the next few years. It's, it looks like we have room coming out.
Yeah, and bringing those properties in, going through that annexation, um, and city limit expansion, that's what those properties along there were intended for. Um, so in the last.
Seems good that, uh, that the developer is bringing with those costs rather than the city.
And that's the thing is when you annex into the city, people think you get free city services, but it's up to the developers, development-driven, to get those utilities in those areas. I mean, the city doesn't have the funds. And then how to pick and choose.
A lot less homes than what it was quite a few years ago. Big batch of public openers.
Yeah, and they're still working on phase two, building out on Avery's up there and then phase three eventually will be planted and.
So in the last fiscal year, so just within a twelve-month timeframe, we approved fifty-five worksheets for homes. Um, and I'd say twenty-ish of them were actually, um, given the certificate of occupancy. That was done for the population serving that we have to do annually, so.
So that's individual homes?
Yes. Like the multi-family homes or?
Yeah.
That's just how long it takes. So in twelve months, a builder can start a home, but by the time to finally give a certificate of occupancy.
It may exceed those twelve months, so it'll be counted for next year.
I'm just curious how many, does it matter what phase they are?
Well, fifty-five were signed off in a twelve-month period.
Does that count like up there on Comstock by us for the, they built what, ten homes in that one section?
Yeah. So if he, if, if he, if Steve Hood, the developer for that subdivision, I'm thinking of Addison, on the left side of North Comstock, so he did in phases and he is just the single builder too. So he builds them and sells them. So he usually pulls two or three worksheets at a time and then follows them through. Yeah.
So what you're saying though is there's fifty-five homes that passed here and that's all?
That we approved. It does, so they could, yeah, multiple could be still being in the process of building. So we have several that were started in years past that are still not completed. Um, but as far as new issued vacant lots that we approved. Yeah, that's still actually a lot if you think about it. And that's with, without having the new subdivision.
And through COVID.
Yeah, and through COVID. So these are existing slots that were done. I think the one that you're, the subdivision you're referring to is one of the few subdivisions that we've approved.
Well, that was still sixteen.
Avery, yeah, and Avery was done in thirteen, so, um, we haven't done, Jamie and I've been here, we haven't really done new subdivisions. We're building out existing lots.
Does that only count single-family homes or what about like the permits on Comstock?
Um, it did not. Those are counted as a separate category and that's probably the only multi-family complex we've got. I don't even know if we did any duplexes recently.
They're trying to get contractors right now. It's like pulling teeth.
Can I take my questions back? My question is, um, has there been any further deliberation on the buildings downtown? On having it torn down or what's the status of that?
The, what building?
Uh, the one that's not on the viable.
The corner?
The corner one.
You'll have an arid threshold?
Yeah, it's this house.
We haven't discussed. Um, South Calquia and.
Yes, the one that's not structurally sound.
Yeah, I think the building department, the building official may kind of be working on something, but, uh, let's see about this now.
Are they turning Leo's place down? Sanders' little house?
Oh, I have not decided. We're usually the last to know. No, I go to the restaurant, but they're doing it like infrastructure right now. I'm sure we did a right-of-way permit there. Um, the White Horse Cafe.
No, no.
Oh, where's Leo's?
Cross street from, uh, the pipe place to glass place right up, you have that little house.
Well, yeah, it's got dual zoning. It's got like four acres and it's right up front. It's like brown.
Those old tacks on?
Oh, Taylor and Central Weston Park. Oh, it's been for sale.
No, not the brown one. I'm about to go one more block, uh, to the, uh, east. Okay. This be Leo Sanders' house. It's just a little tiny place.
Is it being removed?
Glass, little glass.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Directly across street.
Hmm.
Is that the one that always has the utility box trap portion front of it?
Yeah, there's nothing there.
Yeah, yeah, but that, I know what you're talking about.
Well, if they do and it's commercial zoning, um, they could have some problems.
It was brand bought again a long time ago.
Not if they tear it down though.
Right.
Or if it's not been in residential for twelve months.
Yeah, and Leo is no longer with us. Actually, twenty-two years ago, kids were living for a while.
We're the last to know.
The thing we drive through town, right? Okay, any other wish or any comments? Okay, uh, the next item on the agenda is appointment, uh, the chair.
Well, you missed the first sentence.
Uh, I'm already resolved.
So Mr. Lee is leaving us. Not for Lakeside this time. He's moving.
Thank you.
Give me your name. We appreciate all your efforts.
Hey, when you bring it, when you come back, you don't have to bring that back. They'll give you a new one. Oh, really?
So I don't know if you, I mean, if people know your plans, I don't know if you.
Uh, actually, we're moving to Montana. Uh, wife wants to be a little bit closer to her family. Billings. Already sold our house here, it took like three days or more than what we were sold for. And, uh, already got a house in, uh, Billings. Pretty nice little house. That's why, that's why you've got a basement of a fireplace.
Yeah, that's fine here.
You got my carrier and the fireplace. I appreciate it. I'm good to go. Uh, I appreciate, uh, working with everybody here. Sorry that it's been spent some time with you there.
No offense to you.
But, uh, it's been a pleasure working for the city. Uh, Lakeside just didn't pan out. They waited too long to do a vacuum. So we changed your mindset, the whole network. Thank you, bud.
Thank you.
So, next thing is, uh, you guys need to report somebody to take over as the chair.
So that we would just accept nominations, um, for the chair and if that person agrees, then, um, that could be the motion second to vote. Um, or if somebody, if there's no nomination, somebody can volunteer.
I'm nominating now.
I already got volunteered. What was it that I am? Second, they revised you.
Now you're, oh.
Yeah.
No, that's Harps.
That's Harps, yeah, cause Norman's vice chair, no. Norman's vice chair right now.
Cause he didn't come.
No, don't look at me. I am a poor, poor, I can't even be trusted.
Is there any other nominations or volunteers?
Something needs to be decided on right now?
I didn't even have time to answer. As being the vice chair, so there's two.
Or chair.
I mean. So he's volunteering, so there's two names on the hat, I guess, but if, is everyone in favor of Norman?
I'll second Norman.
You were doing that really fast, so it didn't.
I wasn't saying a word.
Good choice. Jake, you are gonna be second.
So do we need to?
So I have Norm as giving the motion of himself, um, as chair, Richard seconding, so then call.
Commissioner Daigle? Uh, Commissioner Lisa Woods?
Hi.
Commissioner Alan Woods? Commissioner Sarnoski?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Davidson?
I say no.
Too late.
Do we have a vice chair?
He was the vice chair.
So he's still, oh, so now we need a new vice chair. So in the event of your absence, we have someone else to run the meetings.
I'll take that.
Do you have a, are you seconding? Yeah, no, no. That would be this month.
We know how to cancel these things.
Commissioner Daigle?
Yes.
Commissioner Lisa Woods?
Hi.
Commissioner Alan Woods?
Yes.
Commissioner Adam, or I guess I don't even need to say your name, Sarnoski, Commissioner Price?
Yes.
And Chair Davidson?
Yes.
I'm sorry you don't get a vote.
You gotta be quick, in a couple of months?
Uh, we're out of the house as of this morning.
So the, so the trailer outside, you guys said that right now?
Well, the trailer's down on Highway eight, but it's a damn.
Yeah, I had to twist his arm.
Cause then we relay this meeting again.
Yeah, that's why you guys kept getting the friendly reminders. Want to adjourn? You're the new chair. Do you want to adjourn the meeting?
Oh. Me adjourn, uh. Seven fifty-eight. I think.
First official due. We're done with that. We're gonna be back in a few weeks.
Yes, no vacation.
Wait, what?
Don't count on that.
So we'll be back, the third Tuesday, third Tuesday of September, which is.